Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and the Lincoln City, City Council. It's 6:00 PM, Wednesday, July 17th, 2013, and we usually begin these sessions with introductions, and why don't we start to my left, and Mr. Sprague.
Roger Sprague.
Doug Hunt.
Harry Quat.
Bill Hall.
Dick Anderson.
Gary.
Ken Marakis.
Gary Ellingson.
Wes Ryan.
And it looks like we have a fall complement of both commission and council, correct?
We're actually missing one, city councillor.
Great turnout, and these sessions were started about 20 years ago under, it was one of the initiatives of former Commissioner Don Lindley to promote better communication between the cities and the county government, and also an effort to bring county government to the people for folks who aren't able to get to Newport for a daytime meeting, thought the idea of making, making the government a little more accessible is a good thing. So, here we are, we have four agenda items tonight, and certainly if the hour permits, we can bring up other things as well, but we'll start off with those topics, and the first one is Rhodes End, and specifically Logan Road.
Chairman, if I could interrupt you, but if we could make sure there's time allowed, we'd like to spend some time talking to you about the villages of the Cascade Head.
Sure, glad to add that, we'll just make sure we do.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, who wants to initiate this discussion? Mr. Beiseman and Mr. Hocker.
We assume that there will be a request from the county for us to take over Logan Road and Rhodes End, and I think that although I haven't had an opportunity to visit with the council about this, I think the staff position would be, as soon as the challenges to Rhodes End are completed, we would anticipate doing that. Now, we do want to, we recognize that it has been recently paved, and to best of my knowledge, it's a good overlay and good condition. We do want to examine the drainage issues to make sure there isn't anything that we can't handle there, we haven't done that, so have no idea, but we do think that the challenges to the annexation need to run before we do that.
The court challenges?
Yeah, and there are, there are several at this point.
I would point out that Logan Road is already a split jurisdiction. The city has the southerly portion from about 50th down to 101, and the county has the remainder from about 50th north to the end, so it just makes sense if the annexation is completed and so forth that Logan be the city's.
Any comments or questions from the council or commissioners?
Is there any purse strings with that, Jim?
Not from my end.
Really? Just check it.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
What's a reasonable time period that we can hopefully expect that maybe all this will be behind us and we can get going ahead?
Are you talking about the road transfer, or the?
Well, I'm talking about the road transfer, if we're, we're going to wait till all these challenges are, are over, what kind of a time period are we looking at, do you think?
A year or two.
Year or two, okay.
And then once the, the transfer process is initiated, time frame for that?
Oh, our legal counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but actually, there's two different ways to do it. One is for the city to make an offer and the county to accept it, the other is for the county to make an offer and the city to accept it, and I would guess what, Wayne? Six, eight weeks, by the time you do that, do publication, get it on the agenda, did I get it right?
Now, when I said one to two years, that assumes that they continue a case in Circuit Court on declaratory judgment. There's two sooner things that are going to happen, one is a challenge to the Luba decision at the Court of Appeals, and two is a request for a stay on the annexation in Circuit Court. Those two will run pretty quick. If the other issue, declaratory judgment on the consents, et cetera, is, is, if they continue that case, I'm just guessing that'd be a year or two, and whether that would go up on appeal, and so on, so it's, it's not going, if they want to continue to spend money and pursue this, it's going to take a while.
All right, well, it sounds like, though, there seems to be consensus on both sides that this is a logical step in the logical sequence of things, and so just encourage, I think we've already got pretty good communication between the two public works departments, and just kind of continue the exploration of what each, each would be looking at, kind of try to lay the groundwork, so when the opportunity is here to move forward, we move forward with this, is that, we're sensing a consensus? Yes. Okay.
In the interim, we will take a look at the drainage issues to make sure, again, that there's nothing that we can't handle, so.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Jim, since you're up here, why don't we go out of order and maybe jump down to East Devils Lake Road, would that make sense?
Sure. I actually don't have a whole lot to tell you about the East Lake Road flooding situation. The gist of it is, is we developed a, what we thought or think is a practical solution that we can afford, it's roughly about a four and a half million dollar project. We did that some months ago, since then, we've been very actively pursuing grants to fund it, so far without success, but we continue to do that. If we have any kind of luck this summer, we're going to try and do some minor things, put a little asphalt on it, try and raise some of it, at least a couple of inches, to try and minimize the flooding. We certainly don't expect that this will eliminate it, of course, but if we can, we're going to make the situation a little bit better. To some extent, it's going to depend upon the weather and, and the water level out there, and that sort of thing, and whether or not we can actually get in there and, and work.
Commissioner Thompson.
Came a couple of years ago, you raised them, and just turned around and the bottom just raised them, so the water level came up in there, or what happened? You had it.
Because we did some work, yeah.
Well, we've done, okay, we've done, over the years, at varying times, a couple of different things to try and provide a little relief. It is settling, and it continues to settle, and so the attempt to deal with that was to try and raise it a little bit. The problem is, is that, if you will, we're losing the race, and so that's why we came up with the fix that we did, the so-called four and a half million dollar fix, which really would be a significant raise in elevation of the road and the bridges. But nonetheless, one of the things that happens is, is that it's differential settlement across there, various parts of it are lower than other parts, and we believe that if we can, if you will, fill in those dips a little bit, and just generally bring the elevation of the road up some, and we're only talking somewhere between, say, two and six inches, that we can, in fact, significantly help the problem, but again, we aren't any, under any illusion that it, of course, will solve it. The four and a half million dollar solution or something like it is what's really, what is really going to take to fix it.
And that will consist of what, that four and a half million dollar project?
The history is, is that a couple of years ago, we had a grant to do a feasibility study to fix the problem, and they examined about five different options. The actual preferred option, and believe it or not, one of the cheapest, was to build a causeway across there. The problem is, we were talking $20 million, and we did actually make application for a tiger grant for that amount of money, but we didn't get it. Realizing that $20 million was virtually impossible for us to come up with under any circumstances, we sat down and dropped back to something we thought was reasonable and affordable, and that's where the four and a half million dollar solution came from. Four and a half million dollar solution would replace the two existing bridges that are out there, one of them's 18 feet long, one of them's 38 feet long, with two, in each case, those two bridges would be replaced by a 60-foot span. And the road itself between the bridges, we would, in essence, build a spread footing, it's very soft under there, we know that from a drilling that was done back about 1999. In essence, we would widen the footprint of the road, try and float it, if you will, with a spread type footing onto that peak, and raise the entire road then up somewhere in the vicinity of three to four feet, and provide for the water flow with the two 60-foot spans, one at Side Creek, one at Rock Creek.
And would you raise it by simply adding asphalt?
No, no, if we, if we do the four and a half million dollar solution, that would involve a structural engineered fill and the building of the two bridges, it would be a complete rework of about roughly 1,400 feet across there.
And the temporary, temporary raising, is that addition of asphalt?
Mostly, at this point, what I'm talking about for, and we're thinking September this year, that would be the principal thing that we would do to bring it up two to six inches.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, actually, the news guard, Jim, today, his news guard had a nice story, I thought, on this Devil's Lake south, and very informative, and so culmination of this and the paper, you know, the public should be better informed. On the September fix or attempt to raise, weren't you also going to try to scrape the sides, was that something that you've gotten approval for as yet?
What the mayor's referring to is, is that one of the things that's happened is vegetation on each of the shoulders has grown up, and if you will, to some extent, formed sideboards to trap the water. There are, in fact, gravel shoulders out there, about six feet wide, on both sides of that road, I've got historical photos that show that. The water level, however, is so high that determining what's regulated and what's not has become a bit of a problem, so recently, I've approached to both the Corps of Engineers and Department of State Lands about, can I in fact work on those shoulders without a permit? The preliminary answer that I have is, yes, I can, but that's not certain yet, there's one other little wrinkle to be dealt with, but if that is in fact the case, we would pull that vegetation off the shoulders to eliminate that sideboard effect, if you will, insofar as we can, and then raise it a couple of inches, and with the idea that the water would then in fact be able to shed.
Well, I guess the other, the important takeaway message, at least as far as I'm concerned, you know, I know I get calls, my colleagues get calls, I'm sure all of you get calls as well, why isn't anything being done about this, because they don't see anything at, or very little, happening on the ground, but it's not simple in terms of engineering and environmental limitations, a very environmentally sensitive spot, and as Mr. Beiseman has indicated, it's certainly not cheap, but Mr. Beiseman and his folks have been working on this literally for years, and hopefully, hopefully we'll get a solution on the near horizon rather than the far horizon.
Commissioner Hall's exactly right, it is a very complex, very difficult problem, both from an engineering standpoint with that 85 feet or so peat that's under there, coupled with the environmental issues.
Just to clarify, so at this point, we have a plan, roughly a four and a half million dollar plan, but until we're successful in obtaining grants, the funding is an issue?
Yes, that's the short answer. If we can somehow secure the grants, then we could proceed and move into the, what we know is the preliminary engineering phase, and that would involve going out across that 1,400 feet and drilling a series of geotech holes to find out just exactly what that subsurface looks like all the way across there. I anticipate that it's pretty much like the one hole we did drill at the 18-foot bridge, and basically, it's 85 feet of peat, and we'll get other information from that geotech work regarding soil strength and that type of thing, and then we'll be able to calculate whether or not our spread footing float idea will in fact work, and if that all comes together, then we, if we have the money again, we go to bid and build it, but, and of course, we'll have to go through the permitting process, and there'll be some wrinkles for that, it will not be an easy project to permit.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
Having waded through that a number of times myself, and sometimes, many times recently, in fact, I've often wondered why we can't dike that south side of the road and cut a channel through across the road, and so essentially create a river and let's put a bridge over the, over the river. Is that possible?
Maybe from a, like a build standpoint, but again, as soon as you get into trying to do anything beyond the shoulders, which is what you would be talking about doing, we're now back into the whole issue of cost and environmental permitting and so forth, and the existing road out there is going to continue to subside. So, building it up, how do I put this, trying to build it up and stay within the relatively narrow existing footprint and have it stay up becomes a real problem, that's why I was talking about, we'd build the spread type footing and try and distribute the load. That's kind of the, what I guess, short answer without giving too much into the technical details of why we're not looking at, if you will, at that kind of a solution.
Yes, Chairman. I'd just like to, Jim's being very modest about the difficulty, I had the privilege of spending too much time with him on this topic, and part of it being in Salem, where we sat with some eight or nine different agencies, of which any one of them have the ability to say no with a veto to this project, and Jim's right, the minute he started talking about anything off the road, going berserk makes it down to flight, I mean, it was rabid. So, he's got a lot of parameters to work with, and it was surprising to me, because as we all know, we can usually come up with real simple solutions, it's the process that gets in the way.
But at least my experience, what I've observed and heard from Jim, you know, the agencies, they don't say yes, but they don't say no either, they just want you to come back with more documentation, more studies, the broom of the wicked witch of the east, you know, just produce something more before they will someday at this mystical point down the road say yes, so getting a project or a plan that they will approve is quite a challenge.
Now, at the meeting that Mayor Anderson's referring to, I did actually, at the end of it, flat out ask him, is there anybody in the room that is, based upon what they've seen, is going to tell me a flat no, and no one said that. They have their concerns, they're going to want their conditions, that's not unexpected, but dealing with them is, again, going to be a relatively difficult, complex issue. For one thing, there's so many of them involved because of the nature of that wetlands, I was out there with a group of them a few weeks back, and they basically couldn't exactly agree amongst themselves, just exactly what should be done about certain things. Now, in their defense, of course, they were looking at it fundamentally for the first time, there hadn't been a lot of work done to examine the issues they were raising, but nonetheless, even within amongst themselves, when you look at that quality, that wetlands, and you look at the issues there, it's difficult just for them to, to agree amongst themselves what would be acceptable and what isn't.
Commissioner Thompson.
That's strange, strange, 15 years ago, when I was state representative, I brought this issue up, Department of State Lands, ODF and W, and I did get flat notes when it came to aldering, salmon streams, at that time, remember, we were looking at listing, and I got flat notes.
Well, to this particular point, the things that we have attempted, for instance, like the, the quick and easy solution frankly, is just to dredge the Rock Creek Channel from the bridge to the lake, now that, they'll flat tell me no, okay? And so, I, I think it, Commissioner, depends to some extent on the question and exactly how you phrase it, but again, Mayor Anderson was there, I believe you were still there when I asked that question, and make no mistake about it, I mean, it's going to be a very complex, the environmental component, I mean, it's going to be very complex, they're going to want substantial mitigation and those types of things, but at this point, I haven't had anybody just flat tell me no to the four and a half million dollar proposal.
Things have changed, too.
Things have changed, some, yes.
We're not looking at a listing of coho, things, things have changed. Okay, well, I think we've covered the salient points on this one, so should we move on to county-owned property in the Schooner Creek watershed, this is something we discussed at our last joint meeting a year ago, and Mr. Belmont will probably need you for this as well, I guess, and, but basically, to recap, refresh people's memories, this is a tax-foreclosed parcel the county acquired, which has a large stand of marketable timber, the city expressed an interest in acquiring the property because it is within the watershed, your watershed for your drink, your main drinking water supply, and I guess, just recently, Mr. Belmont and Mr. Hocker were able to discuss, and I understand there is a draft or proposed agreement for us all to consider?
There is, and I'll leave to Mr. Hocker to talk to the council about when he'll present this to you, but we have discussed a proposal, we know what we're looking at for a dollar amount, we know the path we need to take to do this, it's a little unique in terms of, of the kind of property it is, but there is a mechanism we can utilize using portions of two different Oregon statutes to put this property in the hands of the city, to sell it to the city, so, and we think we've got, we can put terms together to do this over time, so you don't have to come up with the money immediately, and so, I've got a, David provided me with some information on what he feels he can present to the city council, and we've put that in the form of a proposed contract, which is now in David's hands, and for Richard, for your attorney, to look at, and we can go from there.
Any comments or questions from anyone?
My comment is about that.
Well, you know, Mr. Belmont's had a lot on his plate, and I'm sure Mr. Hocker has as well, but anyway.
Better late than never.
Yes, yeah, so.
I was ready to log it, so I'm glad you guys came up with it, if you wanted, you better do it, because that timber's, the alder in there needs to be cut.
I'd hate to turn Terry loose with a chainsaw, you know? There is a story about a county commissioner in this county in the early 1980s, I believe, that a stream was jammed, and, and ODF and W or somebody wasn't going to allow removal of the, of the woody debris that was clogging the stream, so this commissioner supposedly took care of the problem himself with his chainsaw one Saturday.
He did it slow, most of the commissioners I knew would have done, in the old days, would have done with a stick of dynamite.
My gosh, my gosh, well, we've gotten a little more civilized.
Times have changed.
That's probably for the good. Next agenda item is septic inspection program, and Mr. Hocker, and are you going to stay up here for that, Mr. Belmont, or, no, Mr. Hughesing is here, I think we asked.
I guess I'm going to stay for this one, too.
Okay.
I've invited, talk about this a little bit, maybe, the, the city is really facing a very difficult situation with this, with the septic issue that was created over many, many years, our predecessors, before the city was even formed, had allowed a great number of septic systems around the lake, the city's policies continued that to the point where there's 700 and some septic systems that are tributary to Devil's Lake, and DEQ is not moving very quickly on any kind of regulation that would, even on a point-of-sale requirement that has been stalled at DEQ for some time, it's not moving forward that we can tell anytime soon. I believe that, that the state has failed in its responsibilities to ensure that these systems are not polluting, so the city being the supplier of water to most of these, there's a few wells, but almost all of them are on city water, has some ability to control the situation, and where it stands currently is, the city council is seriously considering imposing a regulation for those accounts in the city, not outside the city that we were talking about before, in the city to, to get an inspection with those that are closest to the lake and use the most water, having to go first in getting an inspection. One of the most difficult issues that we're, that we're facing right now, and getting a lot of contradictory information, is what kind of inspection is that? Now, for the county to take, and again, the city's position is only to require an inspection, we don't, we wouldn't take it any further than that, we're not qualified to, we don't want to, all we want to do is make sure that, that they're inspected, that the record is turned over to the county, the county sanitarium can, can move forward or not based on what's, what's on that inspection report. The most difficult thing that we face is, what kind of inspection is this, and it can range from a very simple visual inspection with a dye test, very fairly inexpensive, it's the smoking gun test, if you want, for the county to take action, or a complex inspection, and that's the one that DEQ has been looking at for, for some time, as a possible point-of-sale requirement, which requires the septic tank itself to be uncovered, it to be pumped, every element to be inspected, very expensive, intrusive inspection. So, that's where, we're stalled right now, and we'll get over that, but making a decision of which kind of inspection, the one that would trigger county action if it, if it failed, or the one that would give the homeowner sufficient information to know what they might have to do in the future. So, that, that's a balancing act between cost and governmental intrusion versus just making sure that we are having systems that aren't failing, so, and I know, Wayne, you've heard some conversation on this, and thought maybe you could add, add to it a little bit?
And I know that, I haven't been part of the conversation all the time, David and I have talked about this, but our planning department and our sanitarians have been participating with the city and with the folks at Devil's Lake to discuss what the options might be. I know that our perspective, I think, in terms of, we're fairly limited in our authority, we've got to have the, the kind of, if we're going to get involved, there's got to be a failure that we can take some kind of enforcement action on, which is why we thought it's a simple way of doing it, if you did something like a dye test, that, and there's a failure there, that's a pretty obvious thing that, that gives us the, I think, the justification to go on and say we need to do some additional work on that, and it would also address if there are the very obvious failures, these are going to be the failing kinds of systems, that's a good trigger point for finding those systems that really may be failing and causing problems out there, and it may be that we don't have too many of those, and if you do that, that test may not reveal that, that there's very many failing systems out there, usually there are other indicators, and we hear about those, and respond to those, but at least that gives us an opportunity to participate with you, if that's something you do, and use in your inspection process there, it gives us the, the mechanism to go forward and work on compliance and getting the, the system fixed if there's a problem.
Then, assuming we get down this path, and, and it works, about a third of the systems are in the city, and about two-thirds roughly are outside the city in our UGB, so the question becomes, then, we learn something with our own residents and property owners, we do that by forcing the inspection through the threat of a fine, municipal court fine, but then, where do we go next, and that's something for the county maybe to think pretty seriously about, as to whether or not the county would, would consider following up with a similar ordinance requirement, and so, we're hoping that our experiment, if you will, and our, our program leads, or provides enough information to, for the county to make a decision on whether they'd like to continue that program, the alternative would be for us, and we really don't want to do this, if we think it's necessary, to require the inspection under the threat of discontinuing water service, and we've been down that road. And we've been down that road. And we've been down that road with Rhodes End. And it came, and it was difficult for us to do that, and it caused a lot of hard feelings that are going to be around for a long time. And I for one, and I'm pretty sure our council would prefer not to use that particular club, we can't. I doubt that I would recommend it.
Commissioner Thompson?
So what's the relationship with the Devil's Lake Water Group that works on all of this? How do they fit into this?
They're essentially our partners in this. They will, I believe, handle some of the administrative load. They're certainly our partners as far as wanting to see this happen and being, in a sense, custodians of the lake, Devil's Lake Water Improvement District, and adding their support, their voice to the desire to have this program move forward.
The reason I ask the question is because, aren't they capable of getting some grants to finance this type of work that more entities have trouble getting grants?
I don't know that the financing, well, I don't know that the financing--
I'm fine when you start doing dye tests and doing the follow-up, and if there's grants available.
Well, I know they've looked at that, and they've looked at a loan program, trying to look at a loan program for those systems that would have to be replaced. And the consequences of this, I mean, we're going to get a lot of pushback on this. And the reason being is if you have a failed system and it has to be totally replaced, you're talking about some heavy dollars. So--
Good. What is, what do you mean by heavy dollars? Your idea of heavy dollars, my idea might be two different things.
Twenty or thirty thousand dollars. To me, that's real dollars.
That's a big hit for the average homeowner.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a--
Most homeowners. And that means, and a number of these systems probably could not be re-permitted because their, the groundwater is so high, so you have to go to an advanced treatment system. Those are expensive. And now, obviously, we are trying hard to find ways to encourage sewer around the lake, and that's the ultimate solution. And we do know that there's new technology now that we've looked at in other areas in the state of Washington, for example, where there's thousands of systems on pump systems, on a newer technology pump system that is a lot less expensive to install than gravity sewers. We're going to be looking hard at that. We've budgeted money to do that. Lila, how much?
I was not here.
No, how much did we budget this year for the study on the forty thousand? It's a drop in the bucket, but it's to look at the concept a little bit closer. So it's a tough one. It shouldn't, it should have never come to this point. It should have never, seven hundred septic systems in urban density around a precious resource like the lake should have never happened. The city struggles with that. The city was instrumental in allowing some of that to happen, but so were our predecessors, so was the county, so was the state. I mean, it's, so I guess we're asking for whatever support we can get from the county, both in a current program that we're talking about and hopefully long-term.
Okay. We asked Anno Hughesing, our county planning director, to be here, and I'm just wondering if Anno has any further thoughts or perspectives on this, if we could invite him up as well?
I didn't know you were there. Were you there?
Yes, Commissioners and the city council, good to be here tonight. Anno Hughesing, the Lincoln County Planning Director, Building Department and Planning. I've been part of many meetings about this issue, and I realize how strongly the feelings are in this area, and obviously, the asset that is Devil's Lake needs to be protected. We've signaled a number of times and had many meetings, and I think have been very responsive about trying to noodle through this problem, which is tough, because you, the impacts on the property owners would, could be profound. And so we're all trying to figure out a program that makes sense, that is measured, that gathers a lot of information, that wades into the issue, that doesn't blunder into the issue. And so that's why the talk about triggers and who does what when really comes down to details. And we, you know, our county commissioner knows that we have a new sanitarian on board, Tony Shearer, who had been in our shop for a number of years, brought a lot of expertise, was part of one of the recent workshops. I think he demonstrated his expertise. I feel very good about our new sanitarian, Quinn Andreas, and I think he will be able to step in. And whatever program that we work will certainly be active partners in that. But I do appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your sense of proportionality on this issue, too, that it's complicated, it's nuanced, we need to just keep rolling up our sleeves and figure out what to do. I think there, what I don't hear enough about, though, is the lake is a natural sink for pollutants. Even if we clean up all the septic systems there, there are going to be challenges. There's a lot of background biological nutrients that want to go into that lake. That's what those lakes do. They are, they act as a sponge. We heard about the peat, right? That's generations of organic material and everything, there's a lot of wildlife. And frankly, there's a lot of pet waste in urban environments. I mean, maybe if we handed pooper scoopers to everybody around the lake and with some understanding that, please, pick up your pet waste and put it in the garbage can, that could go a long way. So I think we really need to have a comprehensive solution. And this is a piece of it. It doesn't mean you don't do that, but let's look at the entire lake and let's be clear about the real challenge of handling these wastes and as we go forward. But we look forward to being good partners with you in doing what we can.
I think that's the takeaway message on this one. Agreed, everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you much. Well, I guess we are now down to the item number five that we added, villages at Cascade Head.
Mr. Mayor?
You bought yourself some property.
I passed out to the Commissioners brochures that we came with the property. We didn't necessarily use these, but we've got boxes.
We're just going to beat our chest here for a few minutes.
You should. It's quite a--
But it has, it has significance to the county. This is, this is one of the largest developments, if not the largest development in the county. It had been stalled for a lot of years, and we've seen it go through many different processes. And the most recent that we saw, it actually started to develop and get legs before the economy collapsed, and it actually was moving forward. There was a fairly large investment made in infrastructure. There's about a mile of street water and sewer line that had been installed. So, and then it kind of collapsed, the developer failed on a sixteen million dollar loan, and it ultimately got put on the block, and the city just thought we had to take a shot at it. There was discussions about a sale to one property owner who wanted to build one house on this. This is three hundred and sixty-some acres. It's six tenths of a square mile. It's ten percent of all the land in the city. And now it's within city control, and that means that we can see that development can occur on the majority of it over time in a methodical way. We will take the Knoll, that many of you are familiar with, the Knoll, it's probably the most precious piece of land on the Oregon coast that was available. And by the way, we offered one point two million dollars for about thirty-six acres of that just six months ago, and had that turned down. So that will be put aside in reserve, and there are natural areas within the development plan that are put aside. And it's an environmentally sensitive development, but it is, it is a large development, and it's currently permitted preliminary approval for, I think, nineteen hundred housing units. That's generous. I doubt if that will ever occur. And I'm sure the city will be going through a process of reevaluating the development plan to make sure that it retains its sensitivity, but also it's consistent with the market and as the market changes. It's an economic development investment on the part of the city. It's also, we also put all of our affordable housing, workforce housing dollars into the project so we could afford to make a bid, and all of our open space money, every last dime that we had, and then we scraped the bucket of our general fund to come up with the money to make a reasonable bid on it. And so there will be workforce housing land available, and I assume, don't know, but assume we'll work with the community land trust to set aside land for workforce housing, probably more, a little more scattered. I'm not visioning that as being one big clump somewhere, but in different areas. Mayor, you have a real good handle on this property.
Yeah. No, you've done a nice job of outlining it, and I think, as Mr. Hocker has indicated, for me, it's a huge economic development engine. And there's no other big engine that the Lincoln City, the municipality, could have put forth than this. We all benefit and will benefit from houses being built. And fortunately, the dirt that we've purchased at such a low price point will allow us to encourage developers to build housing. And that way, the city, the county, everybody will be building a tax base, and if our numbers continue to work, a quarter of the people will actually live here of the houses. So we'll be adding population as well as tax base. So I'm excited.
We are all excited about this.
Yes, congratulations. You saw a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and you seized it, and kudos.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, we had a seven-nothing council, and the public meeting looked something like this. I asked the council, now, the council had studied this in executive session, but the public meeting, because we were under confidentiality agreement, and plus, we weren't going to telegraph our bid.
Sure.
Why bid? So the public meeting looked like this. We asked the council to authorize the city manager to bid an unspecified amount on an unnamed parcel.
Sounds like a blank check.
They knew I wouldn't go over that amount.
Yeah, luckily, luckily you trust him, and he knows where this paycheck comes from. So it's worked out nicely. Yes, Commissioner Hunt?
If I may, I'd clarify my comment. Certainly, in view of the type of transaction that it was and the laws relative to public meetings, the options were limited. And clearly, there were some parameters that were established in executive session, which is legal. And so I just wanted to clarify my comment.
No, I think we all knew what you meant, yeah.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm not exactly sure the location, but I thought Cascade Head was established as a biosphere some years back, and--
The northern sixty acres of this development, the city has owned since the inception of the villages. And it is in the Cascade Head scenic research area that has some federal control over it. The remainder of the villages is not. So the sixty acres at the very top of villages, which we've owned for some time, is in that designation, but the rest of the villages is not.
And the relationship with the people that live there, does it disenter and is equitable to this?
That's, that's quite a ways off. That's quite a distance. The neighborhood is really Lincoln Palisades and Rhodes End. And I would imagine that Rhodes End is jumping for joy because they won't see development on top of the Knoll, looking down at them. Although, it's hard to imagine Rhodes End jumping for joy, but I'm seeing that.
Sometime in the future.
Not yet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
It is really rather a misnomer, because you think of villages at Cascade Head and being on Cascade Head, and this is not on Cascade Head. This is on the hill, looks like Cascade Head, but on the south side of the river.
That's wrong. That's a long way away.
Cascade Head is across the salmon, and it's, and most of Cascade Head--
When you say Cascade Head, I think you're talking about Cascade Head.
Yeah, they were very liberal with their, we didn't name it. The name came with the property.
Mm-hmm. It looks like a mini Cascade Head, see? That's--
That's the property.
Cascade Head is off there to the left.
Yeah, so--
Cascade Head's close to it.
That big one.
So, marketing.
Exactly. Well, kudos, and we look forward to seeing the evolution of this property in the years ahead. Are there any other topics that council members or Commissioners would like to bring forward this evening? Mr. Mayor?
If we have time, I got to preface, Fisher Hunt, if he could, some of our councilors were curious of update on Highway twenty and some of the highway developments.
Sure. Had an opportunity today to attend the Oregon Transportation Commission meeting in Salem, and quite a bit of discussion about STIP funding, which, for those that aren't familiar with the terminology or watching, is a State Transportation Improvement Plan. We're looking at money for the years 2015 through 2018, and at this point are just beginning the process to try to prioritize projects from throughout the state. I believe there are nineteen projects from the Area Four, which is the area that includes Lincoln County, the part of, the area that we are part of. But to get to the question on Highway twenty, the project is proceeding smoothly. The first stage, well, Stage Two A was, has been bid and let and was about, is going to come in at about twenty million dollars, and I believe the budget was around twenty-two million. The actual bid was less than that, but there's some construction costs and things that this ODOT is bearing. So it still comes in a little bit under budget. The next, and that phase is to, to begin the clearing and to begin the process whereby the second stage, or Stage Two B, will be bid and let, which is the actual construction of the culverts and the fill that will take place in the four valleys that experienced a substantial landslides, and therefore, they weren't able to do bridges. So the plan is, instead of doing bridges, they're going to put in culverts and fill the, build the valley, and then put the road on top of that. The, that will take approximately a year to get that base started, and then it will take approximately two years to put in the culverts and to finish the fill. And then the final phase would be the paving, the opening of the highway in 2016. I think at this point, ODOT is comfortable with the fact that they have technology to drain the water from the hillside, which is the, one of the crucial issues. There is also the technology to do the buttressing, which, as was explained to me, is like a doorstop. And I actually had an opportunity to observe, basically, they're building rock and dirt to create resistance to the land movement. They're working on drainage. Right now, there are over ninety miles of piping into the hillside to drain water on a busy, or busy day, a wet day. Over two million gallons of water are drained out of the hillside. And again, to put that ninety miles in perspective, the stretch of the road that's being built is about four miles out of the five-point-five mile stretch. So you've got a four-mile stretch of road, not all of which is hillside, but you've got ninety miles of pipe in the sides. The, again, at this point, ODOT is comfortable with the budget. The, again, at this point, ODOT is comfortable with the budget. I think the other interesting fact, and this has an impact, the other projects for Lincoln City, there was about twenty million dollars being held back from the ten thirteen STIP funds, and it was felt that that twenty million dollars was an additional reserve for the Pioneer Mountain-Eddyville Project, PME, as it's affectionately referred to by ODOT. That twenty million dollars has been released by ODOT and is potentially, or has the potential to be funds to help complete the Highway 101 project in Lincoln City and Nill Scott area. So, the fact that ODOT was willing to release that money, to me, is a big acknowledgement that things are proceeding very finely, very positively for the PME project, and at this point, I'm comfortable that the highway has a good chance of being functional in 2016. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Will this create a savings in time that was, I believe, the initial impetus behind this project?
Yes. The, and I, I'm not sure I quite understand the technology, but by, by taking longer to do the base, if you will, for the culverts, and then delaying the filling of the rock, it allows for the rock to settle, and so, there is less additional work that has to be done when the final phase of the culvert, filling the culverts or filling the valley around the culvert takes place. That's one of the savings. And the other savings is that this allows the project to be broken down into smaller bits, which creates a little more competitive bidding, also creates the opportunity for more of our local contractors to bid and create, create some jobs there.
And will this allow large semi-trucks to utilize this route instead of coming through Lincoln City?
Absolutely.
Right. That's what I think your, a lot of your predecessors, or maybe you were on the council then, sir, when this council went on record and put its collective voice behind this project. I think that was one of the main impetuses for that, and that will finally happen once this is done.
My understanding is now the trailers that are fifty-three or fifty-four feet-
Fifty-three feet.
Fifty-three feet longer, or longer, are required to come off Highway I-5, Highway eighteen, South on 101, through Lincoln City, through Newport, and then east on Highway twenty. They'll be able to come straight off of I-5, Highway twenty to GP.
So, that ought to reduce your congestion noticeably, as well as wear and tear on the pavement.
Thank you. I might add, there, there is also about one point two million dollars that's, will be spent this, this summer, next summer, to improve the safety on the existing Highway twenty, and that primarily will involve paint, I guess, that has some glass, or, well, glass cuts tires, but it has a reflective property, so that the striping on the highway will be improved to be more visible. There also will be the reflective posts or signs that are every so often along the highway. They're going to be replaced and established in a more consistent pattern. And finally, well, two other things, better identification of the sharp curves with chevrons and that type of thing. And then, there will be a substantial amount of money to straighten out the sharp corner at the east, east end of the existing Highway twenty, where it comes into the new project, where there was actually an accident where two people were killed. There will be money.
I'm sorry, I just got a question relating to that. Wasn't that originally going to be part of the project, and then when they were trying to cut costs, that was eliminated, and now, they've funded, it's been funded again, except it's my memory, but it could be-
Well, I'm not sure on that. When the, when it was necessary to create the new highway and feed it into the old highway, the sharp bend created a problem, and there is money now to straighten that out.
All righty. Well, it's been a good productive hour. We've covered a lot of ground, and we want to thank you all, gentlemen, and certainly we'll take a brief recess and then convene our regular Board of Commissioners meeting. You're welcome to stick around if you like, of course, and if not, we'll see you around. We'll stand in adjournment until then. You know, we really don't have anything of substance on the agenda, just the consent calendar, unless, probably.
Could there be some pictures? Hey, would you, free commissioners, here, and then we could crawl around and do some pictures?
Are we getting camping?
Seems like that happens.
And they're just, maybe four.
Last time I fixed it.
Thousand dollars a foot.
Is it?
But the chair said yes.
Are we taking pictures?
Yes.
Okay.